When we get started, I'd like to welcome everyone to this evening's meeting of the Planning Commission officially Thursday, October 27, 2022. And I ask everyone to please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Margie, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Capuzzi.
Present.
Mr. Channon.
Present.
Ms. Dobbs. Mr. Fior de Mondo.
Present.
Mr. Garrett.
Present.
Ms. Phillips.
Present.
Mr. Montressor.
Okay, so last meeting, which I wasn't present for, I know that there was some discussion, we had some additional comments from citizens and the Planning Commission members began giving some of their comments to Charlie Schmeele, and Charlie's here with us tonight also. And I don't know, I don't believe that Charlie's had a chance to incorporate all the comments that the Planning Commission gave him last time.
Not from the last two weeks ago.
Okay, so from that standpoint, I don't believe we're going to be making any motions this evening as far as moving the plan up to the Board of Commissioners. We're going to give Charlie a chance to make the changes that were suggested last time, and then we'll move on from there. So that being said, I know there's only a few people here tonight, but you're welcome to make any additional comments or ask any additional questions you have regarding the comp plan. Please come to the podium, give us your name and address, and fire away.
My name's Jake Swan. I live at 522 Oakley Road. In addition to being a resident of the township, I'm also the vice president of the Brinford Civic Association, who I am representing tonight. First of all, I'd like to thank the members of the Planning Commission for their service as volunteers. The work you're doing on behalf of the rest of us is greatly appreciated. Back in June, the Brinford Civic Association submitted comments to this commission about the draft comprehensive plan. With the new draft of the comprehensive plan available as of several weeks ago, we revisited our earlier comments to determine which of the issues we raised had been addressed. In the earlier comments, we raised six issues, and this evening I'll just go through them one by one. First of all, we mentioned that we wanted to see the preservation and improvement of the township's residential areas as a sort of front and center in the comprehensive plan. We appreciate that some language was added to this effect, specifically on pages four and six, but we do believe that this language could be strengthened and elaborated upon. Secondly, our members were disappointed to see that there was not a section on specific neighborhoods in the original draft, as there was in the 1988 plan. There's no such section in the revised draft either. Based on the opinion of our members, the lack of neighborhood sections makes it harder for residents to navigate the plan and find the parts that are relevant to them. It needs to be kept in mind that the residents, as taxpayers, are ultimately footing the bill for the plan, and ultimately they're also the end users of the plan. It is presumably designed for them.
Let me stop you there.
Sure.
Okay. And again, I'm going to use Brookline as an example, since I live there, okay? Brookline is the same as it was 40 years ago when I moved in. Basically, there has been no significant changes in Brookline, other than the fact that they tore down Brookline School.
Right.
And they're going to build a park there, okay? So what purpose would it serve to write a section about Brookline Boulevard or Brookline Neighborhood with the ending that, you know, nothing needs to be done? How will that impact any future developments, say, or?
Well, maybe all neighborhoods don't require such a section, but I do think it would be useful, certainly for some neighborhoods that are facing complex issues, namely our neighborhood.
Right, and I think we addressed some of the issues that Brinford has.
We definitely addressed some of the issues. They are addressed in many places throughout the plan.
Right.
But it is, in all honesty, it felt like most of the people who came to our community meeting back in May were unable to make it through the entire plan, and they did glance through it and try to find parts that they felt related to them.
Okay.
But I do agree that the plan does incorporate, I think it's about, I don't have an exact count, but it's about 10 or 12 statements which are very specific and targeted at Brinford, but they're scattered throughout, right?
So ideally, you would like to see a section in Brinford, and in that section about Brinford, you would want to see all the issues related to Brinford.
Yeah, and I think it could be, I mean, we could draft such a section if that would be useful, or there could be an index that sort of shows where neighborhoods are referred to, if they are referred to, or some such thing. It could be in an addendum, it could be in an appendix, it could be anywhere.
Okay.
But it would be useful and make it more user-friendly, so to speak.
All right. Are you aware of any other neighborhoods that have a similar concern that you do or your neighborhood does?
I'm not.
Okay, all right.
But I imagine the area around the Haverford Road Commercial District.
We've heard from the Haverford Road people, yes?
No, I don't mean the businesses, I mean the other area around there. The areas that have a lot of things going on, so there, where there are schools, where there are commercial zones, where there are transportation issues, I think those areas might be interested in having such sections, but I don't know. That is a hypothesis.
Okay.
We could add an index would be the easiest way to do it, and, you know, take some of these major topics and give you page numbers where those major topics are addressed or geographic areas.
Would you welcome some type of written suggestions that the Civic Association would want to give you to kind of guide you through that process?
We are open to anyone's suggestions, but I'd suggest that they be, you know, we believe this type of comment should be added. I wouldn't recommend that anybody spend a lot of time wordsmithing a sentence because it might not fit within the rest of the document.
Okay.
But I think having some type of substantive index where we can highlight where a few different issues in a few different neighborhoods are talked about would make it easy to find them without having to repeat everything. See, one of the issues with the comprehensive plan is you have things organized by subject matter, and do you also organize them all geographically? And if you do, you're going to have a lot of duplication. So I'd prefer some type of indexing system so we don't have to duplicate everything.
Okay. Does that seem like a reasonable solution to your concern?
I think it would be a step in the right direction. I do think for Brinford, it would be useful to have a, there are just a lot of these issues.
I mean, you're welcome.
Happening all at once in Brinford, this is institutional, parking, traffic problems, bikability, walkability, the parks, zoning, the non-conforming uses, there's just a lot going on.
I mean, any comments you wish to give us, we'll try to work them into the document.
Okay, thank you.
Which is, what we need, and what I think a plan should provide, is what the township is committed to. And not speaking so much about the present regime, but historically, I have felt that township was not committed in various matters to preserving the residential character of Brinford.
Right.
The comment of the late Charlie Held was, well, it should all go medical, was what he felt, and he was the zoning officer. So I think in the drafting, it would be great to have, what is the township, the township committed to?
Yeah, and I think, I mean, I think if we're looking at it from that point of view, it could be useful to have at least a paragraph dedicated to each neighborhood where Cooper Down, you know, Cooper Down is this and will remain such. Brookline is this, you guys do have a bunch of commercial stuff in there, which is very nice. I assume that, does Brookline include the Brookline Avenue corridor?
Yeah, it does.
And then you have the commercial area back towards the, towards the R 100 as well.
Yep, it's a smaller area, but yeah.
The point we always make to elected officials is that the plan is not binding upon them. If it was binding upon them, they wouldn't adopt it. You know, it is really a set of recommendations, and we hope it's carried out, but we don't expect the Board of Commissioners to go through line by line and saying, yes, we will do this, no, we will not do that, yes, we would do that. We hope they agree with the major policies and tell us if they want them changed, but, you know, as to whether there's going to be a certain type of park at a certain location or whether this particular zoning change is going to be made, I don't think commissioners are ready to do that now. So you do see language, it is recommended, it is suggested, so that there can be follow-up discussion, follow-up studies, and follow-up decision-making coming out of the plan.
But isn't it more than recommendations? It's also a vision of sorts and?
Yes, and it's a set, it's a set of recommended policies and recommended strategies.
To achieve a vision.
Yes.
But the vision should be stated.
There is a vision statement at the beginning, and there's a set of goals in the beginning.
Right, but I mean, for each neighborhood, there could be a little vision statement which would perhaps guide people's thinking further down the road.
Jake, we've.
In any case, I don't need to.
Just say one more statement. We've said from the beginning, you know, this is a blueprint on what we'd like the township to look like.
Of course.
Okay, but, and there's nothing binding in the report that mandates that it has to be done. But in the same respect, after this comprehensive plan is completed, there are going to be another set of studies or work that has to be done in order to update zoning regulations, land development subdivision regulations, to incorporate those ideas in the comp plan that the commissioners feel should be.
Understood.
And that's where the real stuff is going to happen, okay?
Understood.
So it's, in my opinion anyhow, it's more important that we not lose focus on the fact that there's a bunch of changes coming that hopefully will implement the majority of the recommendations in the comp plan, but it may not. Again, a decision based upon the.
Of course.
Okay.
The standard is the zoning has to be generally consistent with the comp plan.
Right.
But no action of the municipality can be challenged based upon the comprehensive plan.
Where the comp plan comes in handy is if you have a new development, say, in your neighborhood, and it's on a piece of ground that maybe the comp plan had recommended, you know, more open space be provided in this, in this neighborhood, then the developer would have to show how his plan, his development plan, complies with the content of the comprehensive plan.
Right, or is in the spirit at least of the comprehensive plan.
Exactly.
Yeah, understood, understood.
But everything that is done is governed by the zoning laws.
Understood. No, and I mean, it's not a prescriptive thing, it's a, you know, there are guidelines.
I'm sorry, continue.
That's okay. The third area we commented on early was about the zoning changes, and we just pointed out that pretty much all residents will be affected by these zoning changes, the proposed zoning changes, the reduction of the number of categories to fewer categories.
Yeah, I think the only one we had suggested was to merge R 4 and R 5, and there's some hesitation to put that in the plan, that may be removed, but those two zoning districts are only 500 square feet apart, so that's why we recommend merging them, because they're so similar to each other.
The Planning Commission is not necessarily agree with that concept.
Of course, but just if, it makes people anxious.
Yeah.
To hear that there are big zoning changes being.
Right.
Proposed, all the names are changing, you look at the map, you don't recognize your zoning because all the groups are consolidated, right? So the suggestions would be to include an accurate and complete current zoning map, to include an accurate and complete zoning map after the proposed changes, so people can say, aha, here's my parcel, nothing's changing, that's great, I'm fine.
Charlie knows, Charlie knows he has to put in a current zoning map.
Yes.
Okay, he's, he knows that.
And the one reason why we.
Excellent, I don't know that he knows that.
One reason why we consolidated some of the categories is there aren't enough colors to show all your zoning districts.
It's a challenge, it's a challenge.
So we tried to make it a little more generalized, which is typically done for a comprehensive plan, you don't get into the extreme details of different zoning districts, your, their overall categories of land use.
Right, the input from the community was, they're changing the zoning of my property, like, where do I see what's happening? Right? And then including.
Let me make a point. Zoning, we can't change zoning on properties unless the property owner is notified. They tell you can't.
But nonetheless.
They can't, they can't do it, okay? It can't be done.
Nonetheless, in the plan, it talks about zoning changes, and it has categories which are frankly unrecognizable.
Okay.
To current residents. And then the fourth thing there was to include an easy-to-understand visual aid mapping current zoning to proposed zoning, and include a rationale for these changes, right? It's unclear what the current problems are that these changes are designed to address. What's that?
Can you repeat number four?
Let me just go from the beginning. A complete, complete and accurate current zoning map, a complete and accurate zoning map after the proposed changes have been implemented.
Yes, I was about to say last time, okay.
An easy-to-understand visual aid mapping the current zoning to proposed zoning, just so if I have this, later I'll have that, and a rationale of some sorts. There is no rationale, from what I can tell, for these changes, for most of them concerning the residential stuff. Fourth.
Actually, that, I mean, 95% of the zoning map would be the same if this plan were to be implemented, and I don't think there's any zoning map changes in Brinford except to reduce the commercial intensity on a block of Lancaster Avenue.
Terrific, I don't think that necessarily comes through.
Okay.
When reading the plan, though. The fourth thing is the language about non-conforming uses, so that has been expanded and changed, but it still doesn't provide unambiguous guidelines.
Yeah, there was a lot of, there was a lot of discussion about how much we should say, and the consensus was we shouldn't say too much in that regard, because it is a very complicated legal issue.
Right.
We don't want to give people misinformation of what the township can and cannot do with non-conforming uses.
Okay, I do think the language could be made less ambiguous and a little more robust. But fifth, safe streets, walkability, and bikability, again, you guys did add additional language, great, pages five, 24 and 25, but again, there's no sort of clear vision or set of goals that people would judge any future changes by.
And I think I explained, we don't have the resources to go around and study every street and every area in the township. Let me finish.
I'm not talking specifics.
Well, then we talk generalities, and I don't know how much, how much detail you can get into with generalities. You are aware that the township did start, did hire a consultant to start doing an analysis of where improvements can be made to sidewalks and street safety. You're aware of that, right?
For Brinford.
For the whole township.
Why?
For the whole township.
I know there's.
And this is like the first phase, and I think Brinford might be the first phase.
Is that the traffic analysis?
Not traffic, they're talking about sidewalks and walkability and.
I thought that was specifically, for the moment, specifically for Brinford.
Okay, well, if it is.
Money had been received, and that's wonderful.
All right. But, but see, that's, that's the start of something, okay?
It's fantastic.
And, and what more can we say in the comprehensive plan? You know, continue that type of analysis.
One could say the goal for the township is to have every resident be able to get around safely by non-motorized transportation.
Yeah, and probably not going to happen, but we can.
Well, it's not going to happen, but it would be nice.
We're going to have a real pushback if we try to install sidewalks on every street where they don't really exist. We've tried to highlight some of the most problematic stretches, Haverford Road most particularly, where there is a need to replace, may say, lengths of sidewalks, but if we start ripping up front yards of every single block that doesn't have a sidewalk, you'd have a civil war, and people would be, under, under normal standards, the property owner is required to pay for the sidewalk.
Of course, it would be a disaster.
We, there was a subdivision, a three-lite subdivision on County Line Road?
Yeah, County Line.
County Line Road, okay?
Oh, yes.
We, the Planning Commission suggested curbs and sidewalks because it was right next to the entrance to the park, okay? And lo and behold, they didn't get required. The developer has to put up money in case they do build them in the future.
Right.
But residents came out and said it didn't make sense to put sidewalks there.
Well, they have sidewalks anywhere on there.
We hear that argument all the time.
Of course.
Why put sidewalks in where no one's going to walk, okay? So, you know, it's like, we try to do the right thing, and it doesn't happen, and we try our best to put in sidewalks where they're appropriate. So this Planning Commission is committed to having sidewalks installed, and if it were up to us, I think we would put them in everywhere, you know, at least from a development standpoint, when a developer comes in.
Until I was here for the, for the, there was a, you guys were talking about something on Darby Road out there.
Right, Darby Road.
Sprow Road, and, you know, the little 100-feet section of sidewalk would have been.
But if you don't, if you don't start somewhere, then it'll never happen.
Of course, but I do think there could be some aspirational language in here about what we're trying to achieve, so, in any case.
All right, I mean, one more thing. And our rumblings from the Board of Commissioners that they want to relook at the ordinances as far as where sidewalks are required and where they're not. Right now, it says sidewalks may be required if the Board of Commissioners think it's appropriate. I think they're looking to strengthen that language. So the movement is in the right direction.
Right.
Okay, and, and it's, I just want to make sure you understand that it may not be written exactly the way you'd like it in the comprehensive plan, but in reality, we're moving in that direction.
There is, there is one suggestion there when you do get to the subdivision when it's updated, and that is improvements in lieu of other improvements. This is done a lot in Bucks County. So for instance, let's say you have a subdivision occurring on an existing road, and the subdivision would normally be required to widen the road, install curving, install sidewalks, and they want to get out of that. You can have a fee in lieu of the improvements.
Right.
So instead of having, you know, 100 feet of road be widened a large amount, you can use that fee to then widen a much longer stretch of road and add a shoulder that might serve a much larger number of people in a more reasonable manner.
Right.
So it's an alternative that's out there when you update your ordinances to have, instead of having very short segments of everything, using the same resources to have much longer improvements that have more public benefit.
And we already made that suggestion already with the recent subdivision. So, you know, we're trying to do what's right and what's best for, for everybody, okay?
Sure. It's appreciated. The last thing is related to parks and open space, and we know that the township has started this other plan, which is dedicated to parks, recreation, and open space, but it still seems appropriate to have some sort of clear vision statement or goals in this comprehensive plan about parks and open space.
Okay.
I think the statement is pretty much, we have to make best use of what we have because it's going to be extremely difficult to find new land for new parks.
Right. And, and there are suggestions like improving or adding trails or connections for trails where it becomes possible. There is a recommendation or a suggestion that in order to have more ball fields available for use, that we consider using synthetic turf instead of natural grass. The advantages of synthetic turf are, you know, you don't have fertilizer and as much maintenance, plus if it rains, you can be playing on them an hour after it's raining.
Year-round, yeah.
So things like that, you know, we have a limited supply of land as far as recreation and open space goes, so let's try to optimize that land the best we can with whatever improvements we have. And the, the study that the Parks and Rec Department's doing is more focused on how they can maintain their assets.
It's more of a re-cha location, isn't it?
And what they, what they have to do in order to make the maintenance occur as needed.
Without tremendous increases in expenses is one of their motivations.
And, and one of the comments that, that we have as a board is going to be, in the subdivision ordinance, we, we look at the requirements for open space, and the way it's written now, I don't think is very effective as far as helping the township with open space. I mean, we say you have to give 30% of your development, you know, for open space if it's more than a certain size, if it's more than acre development, but then you end up with all these little pieces of ground all over the township which don't serve any purpose. So rather than that, if we take a, say we require a fee in lieu of that open space, then we can use those monies to help improve parks in other locations where improvement's needed.
Right, sounds reasonable.
So, I, I'm not, I'm not trying to argue with you. All I'm trying to say is, we understand what you're saying, and we're trying to incorporate ideas and into the comp plan as best we can without being, you know, specific, but again, being specific enough that the township doesn't ignore it.
Right, I just think that, maybe I'm mistaken, it feels like there, in many other comprehensive plans, or at least the few that I've looked at, there is more sort of aspirational vision statements. Something like, make the best of our current parks and open space is not an aspirational statement.
It is if you don't have any.
And then, so if you're.
It's the best you can do with what we have, I mean.
If that is the criterion, so you're, that's your guideline, and you're, you guys are talking among each other about a subdivision, you're saying, huh, are we making the most of our existing parks at open space in this subdivision? Then how do you even answer that question?
Well, you, you have to realize the subdivisions begin, we don't have.
But you understand what I'm saying, it's the same thing with, with all of these.
If we had a, a piece of ground, let's say, 50 acres, then yeah, we'd be looking at 15 acres of open space, and then we have something to work with, but.
There's not, there's not much of that left.
Oh, there isn't, you're right, but our subdivisions are 20,000 square foot, and the guy splits it up into two or three lines, so what do you want to do? You're going to have a 10-foot-wide open space area in everybody's backyard? That's not going to do anybody any good except the people who live there. And that's not the purpose of the open space plan as far as the ordinance.
Understood.
And most people would rather pay fees than to get land.
Yeah, absolutely.
Sure.
We have to tailor the ordinance, though, to make it more appropriate that fees be paid instead of these pieces of ground that mean nothing.
Well, what, what happens is the plan code says you need mutual consent of the applicant and the township in order to do something other than public recreation land, but if you have the standards for the public recreation land be strict enough.
Right.
That they're unlikely to meet them, then fees are required.
That's where the zoning changes and the subdivision ordinance changes come into play. That's, that's the important part, you know? And we'll get there.
Well, right, that, that comes later, that's not what we're talking about tonight.
And we don't want to wait too long to do the ordinance changes, we're going to miss opportunities.
Right.
Yeah, so that pretty much wraps it up.
Okay.
Thank you guys for your, for doing this.
Again, I'm not trying to argue.
It's been long, and it's been painful, but we appreciate it.
All right, thanks for coming out, all the times that you have. And you guys, if you have anything to say, feel free, I mean, I don't have a monopoly on this thing, you know?
Hello, good evening.
Hi.
My name's Dori Doughty, 2417 Rosewood Lane, Haverton, Pennsylvania. I actually have a couple of things, I'm glad there's not that many people, not because I'm not glad, but I have Frank Perizzi of the Ardmore Park Beverage, couldn't make it, he's not well, so he wrote something out, and I asked him if he would mind if I read it to you, if that's okay, or?
How long is it?
Three and a half pages.
Three and a half pages, all right.
I'll try to read fast.
Okay.
So his issue was, starting off was Haverford Road zoning issues. As the owner of Ardmore Park Beverage located on Haverford Road for almost 40 years, you might think I'd be in favor for the current high-density, high-rise development proposal because of the opportunity to sell more beer to more people. However, in consulting with local business owners in the community and discussing this proposal, it has come to light that while this project has been in research and development for a significant number of years, people like us with a vested interest in the community have only recently learned of the proposed changes in the project itself. The success of many municipal projects requires input and involvement of multiple stakeholder groups, that does not seem to have happened here. Had the people who commissioned the study and the consultants themselves included all of the stakeholder groups, perhaps we would today be united in discussing a proposal which all the groups could support or back. However, lacking that involvement and desire for consensus, I find myself instead having to react negatively to this proposal with its narrow focus and scope of involvement. The high-density, high-rise development, residential development as proposed would harm our community and our business in many ways. If it must move forward, it should consider the input of the local property and business owners, including those who own property, being considered for the proposed development. Preferably, the only way it should be considered as written is if it is in a different location for the reasons outlined below, and this is me talking to you, you just talked about open space, and he talks about that in here. These are based on practical business reasons and on conversations with many neighbors. If new home development is a, is a priority, then perhaps an alternative site could easily be, easily be selected for the project. For example, on Haverford Road. For example, on Haverford Road, behind Haverford College, has a rail station at each end that has not been developed and would appear to be ideal. Many of the objections related to the plan's proposed location do not exist. If the objective is to increase tax revenue, then this will have a doubling effect as it will change from a non-tax status to a tax status, plus then have improvements. Is my pace okay?
This is, this is ground owned by Haverford College.
Yeah, the one in Haverford.
Frank's recommendation is we buy ground from Haverford College.
I don't think they'd sell anything.
We had this conversation with him, although already the last time he was here and spoke in person.
Okay.
And we're, this isn't a residential project. Nobody is purchasing and building something. We are trying to allow for responsible development, but we are not starting a residential project. And that's the same conversation that we had with him previously.
But I think his point when he read, read, he spoke that day, he spoke to you, Jack, if I may, Mr. Garrett, that he said, would you mind having a business on top and next to your property? And you didn't say anything, so it's the same kind of thing. If you're a business owner and you're told to be having put two, three, two and three-story dwellings on top of yourself or maybe cut the whole thing at the bottom.
No one has told him to do that and he doesn't own that building.
I, I don't think you spilled.
He owns the vacant property next to it.
I'm sorry, I don't, you don't understand the concept. Concept only works if the property owner agrees to it.
And probably a couple of properties.
Well, yeah, it's, 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 three or four properties may have to get together. We, we haven't made any regulations yet, but I would imagine that the, the size of the property in order to qualify for this type of development might be one or two acre. And nobody along that stretch of Haverford Road owns one or two acres. So the only way it works is if the individual property owners agree to it and they get, get together as a group and agree to it.
Or sell.
Or sell to a developer.
And it's only a block or two that has the residential option on the map.
Right.
So then why change the zoning at all? That's what I think he's going to end up saying. Why change the zoning at all if you really don't think it's going to be possible?
Because it could.
Keep it as it is.
No, I don't say it's not possible, okay? It's possible. I mean, and, and it all comes down to dollars and cents. I mean.
And if you have a wealthy developer that comes in.
There you go.
There you go.
That's right.
Do you want it to sell for $2 million and live on a beach with, you know, drinks or something and not, not work anymore? Yes, right, absolutely.
It's the, the property owner's choice, okay? The township isn't forcing anything.
But they might incentivize and not themselves, but other groups are.
They meant what?
There might be some incentive, incentives done by other organizations like Discover Haverford and other nonprofits that are wanting businesses to come in, big corporations to come in, to, to gut out what you don't seem to be giving enough revenue.
That's not a goal of our partnership for economic development.
That's what?
That's not one of their goals. Where do you, where do you come up with that? That's not their goal.
They're interested in seeing this plan.
Their goal is to, to help those businesses thrive in the community, okay?
Which businesses, the ones that are existing?
And what's in there now? Who do you think their members are? Who do you think HPD's members are? It's not Comcast. It's the guy who owns the pizza shop on Brookline Boulevard. A guy or the lady who owns the florist shop on Darby Road. That's who their customers are. And they try to find ways to help those businesses get better. They're not looking to do anything to hurt current businesses.
Right now, the commercial zoning along a portion of Haverford Road is extremely strict and it has inhibited businesses from opening. So one of the recommendations of the plan is it's a change, I believe, from C1 to C2. C1 only allows offices. You know, who's going to put an office building on that part of Haverford Road?
What part of Haverford Road are you speaking?
The, the main commercial part out in the area of Windward Road.
The bus lane to Eagle.
Sorry.
Ardmore to Windward. There are portions there that only allow offices, which makes no sense at all. So one of our recommendations in the plan is to change those areas from C1 to C2 so that there is a reasonable range of neighborhood businesses allowed. And then a portion of that area on the east side of Haverford Road, adjacent to existing homes, the proposal is to give the option of two or three stories of apartments above a new commercial building on a larger lot to help create an incentive for investment into the site.
Low-rise residential.
No more than three stories. We're not recommending anything low, taller than three stories, except there's a couple of places where there are some existing five-story buildings that would be recognized. The whole rest of the township is recommended to stay three stories.
Right, it's, it's all low-rise. There's no high-rise residential development going to happen in this township. Not with this comprehensive plan.
And there's no requirement to do anything more than three stories under state law. There's court cases on that. But we do have an obligation to allow for apartments. And if you don't allow for them, the zoning can be challenged by a developer or you can force you to have them in a place where you don't want them.
I mean, I'm familiar with that area and I would love to see more businesses open in that area and to see more residents in that area. I think more residences and more businesses in that area is an improvement to the township. It brings in tax revenue. It increases the tax density in that area. And right now, it's not a well-used stretch of property.
Does that help with the number one?
It's going to be significantly improved when PennDOT completes their improvements next year with the traffic congestion.
The calming, right, yeah. But does that help with the number one? It's, I don't know if these are ordered, Charlie, with the citizen survey. Reducing traffic congestion when you add more residences and more businesses in an area that has 16, what is it, 16,000 cars a day on, on Haverford Road?
The number of new residents that would be possible would be minimal in the whole scheme of things. And many of the people who would want to live there would be walking to the, to the transit station.
And, and you're basing your decision on information that isn't available yet? Okay, the, the new regulations will require traffic studies? And there may be a, a fee, traffic impact fee that's required also. The regulations haven't, haven't been written to control the, the type of development.
I'm just talking about the survey, what was wanted, that's all. Because we keep on talking about the survey, the survey, the survey. So does that go against what was wanted? That's all I'm saying, so.
If it's a matter of traffic flow, that's the problem there. It's the interruptions of the traffic. It's the stop and starts and the turns that PennDOT found were causing the severe traffic congestion.
Dory, look at Eagle Road, okay? And, and I assume you're familiar with the traffic that's on Eagle Road and how bad it can get sometimes?
Sure.
Do you think traffic would move better if there were four lanes of traffic instead of three?
I would imagine it would flow better, but I don't know what impact it would have on anything else and what.
Well, the impact would be on the commercial property adjacent along Eagle Road.
So does that help the businesses?
And all I'm saying is there might be a requirement in order to build this type of development that you improve the roadway in addition to that, okay? So you can't, we can't say that it's going to increase traffic. It may increase traffic, but it may improve traffic too. We don't know because we don't know what the, what the requirements are going to be.
And if you reduce the number of driveways, you should improve traffic.
You would think so. So, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
It's, it's just that a lot of the things in Frank's letter we heard before, okay?
But actually, and, and I've been to most of the meetings ever since you guys started, except it was late last week, so I heard a lot of the comments though. But some of the things that are in his letter that I've read, maybe you can tell me at the end. It's not going to take, it's only going to take me, I did time myself. It took, when, there's no interruptions, I could do it in five minutes. But I didn't take Evelyn Wood's speed reading course, uh, speed speaking class yet. But, um, so the first point of, of the many he has, eight, nine points here. Many of the business people affected have their life's work and this, and their estate and their businesses and have worked especially hard in the past several years to keep going, to keep profitable. It is a consensus that they will be negatively impacted by the proposed change. One major concern is that a loss of parking spaces and the lack of a plan to retain or replace lost parking spaces. Given that the, many of these businesses do not currently rely on walk-in business, how likely is it that they won't be negatively impacted if they currently operate in an environment where parking is at a premium? Number, point number two, area residences, every residence, excuse me, have significant investments in their residential properties and having a high-density, high-rise structure. And I guess I've been, it's maybe that's not the right term, but I'm just going to use what he has in his term, high-density, high-rise structure. Blocking their view is undesirable. This would have the same effect on property desirability as towers, windmills, smokestacks, et cetera. The homes on Rosemont, Belmont Avenue and other nearby streets, and he's talking about the streets that are back behind where he is, would especially be hurt. Has the consultant considered this impact? Would a project involving, that involves a, this, this type of impact, would a project that involves the community consider such a significant change in maximum height? And I just want to step aside and just say, last, on September 8th, there was a discussion with the board about what is affordable housing. A person from the Gulf Manor area was concerned about that. She said her whole neighbor was really up in arms about it. And in the discussion, Maggie had, Maggie Dobbs, Ms. Dobbs, had said that when new residential development, if it's mixed use, is, is high and lucrative, maybe a luxury kind of thing, that existing property values would go down. I don't know if everybody else agrees with that though, but when I heard that, that had me up in arms because I live right near Haverford Road and I would not like to have my property value go down. It's not in his, his letter here.
I don't think, what, what she said was that if you increase the supply, it helps to moderate increases in housing costs.
I have a quote from her right here, I can read to you.
I mean, I, I read it, I, I actually, I think I just watched that video today.
Well, I just typed verbatim what she said and I'll read it, see if that, does that helpful to me?
Well, Maggie's not here, so there's no use debating what she said. What she said and what she meant is immaterial right now because she's not here.
She said it a few times, so it's not like she didn't say it. Nobody else, nobody countered her when she, nobody countered her when she said it.
I would like to be recognized by the chair. Excuse me one moment. Before we go on, first, my understanding of what she was saying is a, a relative concept, not an absolute concept. But whatever it was, when she's back, we can get a clarification from her. What's more important, I feel like sitting here, having the same experience I did some meetings ago, where I really feel bad for this gentleman for having spent so much time and effort putting into this document because it's well-written, a lot of good points, great advocacy piece. But it's an advocacy piece to address a project that a board or a commission would be considering implementing. And that's apples to oranges for having a provision in the comprehensive plan that says if private owners would like to join together and do a project with multiple properties, X, Y, Z. In no way, shape or form does that implicate the notion of putting, implementing a project by the township. Now, perhaps some of the anxieties around this concept of economic council and these words, that maybe people interpreting the mission of that group as being something like redevelopment or something where they're trying to bring in outsiders to develop land. Those kinds of things happen in communities where there's open land to be sold and developed. Here, as was described, that focuses on our existing businesses. Whatever happens in the future, they'll adapt to that. So I think that while that is internally perhaps consistent and supportive, it's not, doesn't apply to this situation. So I don't know how much more we can get out of it by going back and forth on it. Those are my thoughts. And it's a shame because yes, in hindsight, it would have been, we're, we're humans. We're trying to learn as we go. In hindsight, clearly, there probably were things that could have been done better to frame this so people have a basic understanding of what's involved. So when the information comes to them, it doesn't leave them to fill in the gaps of what they don't understand. And so we have these situations where people are making the case around something that's not an issue. I think I've just repeated myself, so I'll stop there. But I'm, I feel very badly for that time and effort and for the word anxiety. But there's nothing, at least that I know that I'm privy to in this document, that would go directly to those kinds of outcomes.
And no reduction in parking would be proposed. If someone has existing parking, they can keep it.
Dory, why don't you go ahead and finish what you're, started reading there.
All right, well, I mean, I, I might be cut short from reading this altogether, is that what you're saying?
Actually, I'd like to say one thing more. I don't process that fast and so I.
I'm reading too fast?
I see you, you're trying to get through.
I know because I feel like I'm, I know, I'm the same way, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, I'd rather have a copy of it.
Yeah.
Because I do read everything. I take my time with it.
All right, well, he's going to submit it to you anyway. And I just thought since he was ill and wasn't able to be here, I would help him out. The only thing that I'll finish with that, that is from me and not from him, is that the last meeting, there was an initial discussion. I, I got here late, so I watched the video. And it stated that, you know, some neighborhoods have requested or stated that we like our neighborhood just the way it is. And that's what was stated. So that's great because I actually, if I was asked that question, I would have liked to have been able to say that too. But unfortunately, and I, I mentioned this too, whether it was here or not, but I, I was in communication with a lot of different business owners and a lot of different adjacent people on all different streets. And again, it comes to that, but if those individuals could have had an opportunity to say, I'd like my, my neighborhood to be just the way it is. They didn't get a chance to answer that and neither did I. And I'm saying it now, I'd like mine to stay just the way it is. And I don't think it's fair to have it be that across the board, that areas that are targeted, Haverford Road and Eagle Road, I'm what it's going to say because I'm not, it's not like it's a target, but these are the ones that I'm focused on because I live right near Haverford Road. I'm not, I'm not happy that they, those people were not included in part of what you guys have all worked together on and that they should have been at the table. And so make it happen, maybe put the brakes on this for a little bit and say, okay, is this going to work for you guys? I just feel like you guys are dictating to us, you as representatives of the commissioners who put you into, in the volunteer position. I'm glad you did what you did. I'm sorry, it's been so long-winded and we've come here. I'm not trying to be your enemy or anything. I really would like this to work. But I really feel like if we could have worked together in such a way that you guys actually are helping the existing businesses and it feels like you help the businesses. It doesn't feel that way to me. It feels like you guys are telling us what you're doing to us and not working with us. I'm just trying to tell you how I'm feeling. So those are my feelings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Mick Wagner and I live at 2422 Rosewood. One of Dory's neighbors. And I, my mother taught us, you can, you can get more bees with honey. I obviously did not learn that lesson very well. And I just am going to tell you what I think. And you might not like it, but it's what I'm thinking. I don't trust you guys. I used to live on Brenner Drive in the late 80s. And so this was during the attempt to, quote, "We got to put this somewhere in the township at the intersection of Darby and Sprawl will affect the least number of people." I refer to the high-rise that never happened to known as David Flew Goliath. I was involved in that.
Excuse me, ma'am, what year are you talking about?
Pardon?
What year was that?
The late 80s.
Late 80s?
So it didn't happen, but we fought that for a very, very, very long time. This comprehensive plan started before the COVID lockdowns and somehow has continued with little awareness by the township's citizens. But nonetheless, has marched forward. Apparently there has been some, sorry, I need my glasses. Some community feedback, which if we can believe what somebody stated, was 80% negative. I've heard that. I hate percentages. Give me real numbers. Is that eight out of 10 respondents? 80 out of 100? 800 out of 1,000? If so, do you not understand your taxpayers don't want this? Should I assume the previous? We got to put it somewhere and Haverford Road will affect the fewest number of people. You say this can only happen if a developer comes in and offers big bucks to buy an owner's sale. I think your citizens expect a more favorable attitude towards our township, maintaining the ambiance that made them buy here in the first place. I grew up in Lower Marion Township and I never used to cross Lancaster Pike. I thought that you'd fall off the edge of the earth. And sometimes I think I probably did. It's clear that the business owners did not know about your plan to demolish Eagle and Haverford Roads.
We're not demolishing anything.
But maybe because business owners don't matter, but the property owners that don't have a stake in Haverford Town do. And so that brings me to what could possibly incentivize somebody to buy up these areas for big bucks. And suddenly a light went off. Dory mentioned this. Discover Haverford is in the business of incentivizing businesses. That's what they said. It's not just sprucing up and giving Burks Inn a new, you know, thingy over their door. They have $18 million to spend by 2026 and they are going to spend.
Wait, wait, wait. What are you, what are you talking about? $18 million? Who's going to spend that? The township?
Develop Haverford.
Develop, no.
Develop Haverford, yes. That is what they said.
You're wrong, you're wrong, you're wrong, okay?
They wish they had $18 million.
You're wrong, I'm telling you, you're wrong. What you're saying is wrong.
18.1 million dollars.
The township might be getting that money, but Haverford Partnership. The township might be getting that money, but Haverford Partnership for development is not.
Haverford, Discover Haverford-
Yeah, same thing.
Was who had the soiree. And that's what they said. When you, when you couldn't make it to the meeting two weeks ago, which there wasn't supposed to be a meeting, this is why I don't trust. The meeting happened.
I'm sorry, ma'am, but I have to object to that. I'm going to object to that, because we had a very specific conversation here on the record live, as to whether we were going to have that meeting on the 13th. Okay? Now, I wasn't here on the 13th either, I couldn't be. But the decision was that they wanted to continue the dialogue and keep moving this process forward. Nothing was decided at the last meeting, nothing was hidden from the public. You can go right now onto YouTube and watch that entire two-hour meeting, just the way I did, because I was absent.
We came.
So point of personal objection to that. I'm sorry for my sharpness, but that was bothersome.
Well, anyway, if they have 18 million, that's a whole lot of water fountains all over Haver Township.
A lot of what?
Water fountains.
Water fountains. Like at that triangle thing, I mean, that thing. But it could also incentivize somebody to buy up all these buildings and, and put up what you want on Haverford Road.
I'm sorry, what could incentivize people to put up buildings?
$18 million.
Where did you hear that figure from? Where did you hear that there were 18 million? What is, where is it from? Where did the township get 18?
Discover, Discover Haverford is getting-
They are not getting, do you understand me? They are not getting $18 million.
The only thing I could guess-
I heard this.
Well, then you heard wrong, or whoever told you that is wrong.
I did not hear wrong. They had this soiree at the crack. Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago.
For all the people that are involved in Discover Haverford.
I'll tell you what I'm going to do, I'm going to call the executive director of Discover Haverford, and ask her about that, okay? All right?
What I think would be helpful-
I'll get an answer for you, and I'll present it at the next meeting, okay?
They specifically said that in the free money that Biden's printing, and is handing out to all these communities, that they have 18 point something million dollars.
The township has it.
And they will spend it.
The township has it, yes.
So somebody can incentivize someone to buy up Haverford Road-
It's not going to happen.
And put this up.
It's not going to happen.
You have to write that in blood.
Yeah, I think that's the total amount the township received to make up for some of the pandemic tax revenue losses and other purposes. And a lot of that money is going into infrastructure. It's not going into subsidizing development. But there is, I think, a piece of that, maybe like $50,000, that went to HPED, Discover Haverford, for facade improvements.
Facade, exactly.
So it's like a very, very small piece of that, I think it's 50,000, but it's for specific purposes.
Quote-unquote, "We have 18.1 or 2 million dollars, and we are going to spend it all by 2026." That's what they said.
The township.
The township, right.
Discover Haverford.
No, the township. Stop saying Discover Haverford has $18 million, because they don't.
Mr. Chair, may I be recognized, we're dealing in hearsay here, and we're debating, and this makes no sense, it's not constructive for us, it's not constructive for the community. I would ask that this person at the podium state the fact, make the factual statements and/or the opinions that she holds to us about this comprehensive plan, and what she thinks should or should not be in it. It's very clear to me that she feels like there are things going on behind the curtains. Of course, I don't even know where the curtains are, because I've only lived here since 2008, and I've only been on this committee for a number of months. And so, the notion of being held accountable for ghosts of the past is really gotten going here. So I need to take a breath, I'm going to step out for a few moments, but we need to resume this in orderly fashion.
I just told you that I was going to tell you what I'm thinking. I'm not collecting bees, I have no honey.
All right, I just wish that-
The comprehensive plan is not a plan for your citizens. We need to support the businesses we already have, and help them through this downturn in the economy, and maintain the family flavor of our community.
That's a good statement, I appreciate that.
Just to be clear, you are opposed to any additional commercial uses on Haverford Road? Between Eagle and Haverford College?
I think most of the buildings along Haverford Road are occupied with businesses.
And you would prefer that they just stay the way they are, correct?
I, I don't want somebody tearing all that down and trying to build something that looks like King Street, and those businesses are then gone, and now you're building.
Okay.
And now, where did those businesses go, and now you're trying to get new businesses back?
Do you understand that those businesses will stay there unless they choose to go?
No, because-
That's, that's what the plan is.
Most of them are not owned. Most of them, most of them are not-
I think there is-
They don't own the property, you're saying they rent.
I think there is a realistic concern, in some cases, that some businesses are renting, and they might not be able to afford to stay in business if their landlord's sold, and that something was developed and had a higher cost for that top of their business.
Where would they go while all that was happening?
Okay. I understand, thank you.
And secondly, you're opposed to any further housing or apartments on Haverford Road? Between Eagle and Ardmore?
I, I don't see how that fits, because behind those properties on the, whatever side that is, the-
East side.
The train side?
Not the train side, the other side.
The other side, that's east side, yeah.
That Rosemont goes up there.
Right.
You know, that's, that's a big falloff, it goes up a hill. And so if you're talking about moving the buildings out towards the street, and then having a driveway in the back, that's not a very wide building. And where is the parking going? And they're going to build it underground, and, and the place is a bowl. When it rains, the water drains down into the bowl, and so now you have underground parking, and now it's a swimming pool.
They're all good considerations, and-
None of that makes any sense to me.
I, I appreciate your comments, thank you for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? I don't, I don't, we don't mean to scare anybody off, believe me.
And I wish to, I wish to apologize for my outburst. I've been down sick for 10 days, and I pulled it together to come here to this meeting, so I'm not at my best. And I want to be empathic, and I want to listen. I'll leave it at that, back to business.
Hi, my name's Helene Comrie Smith, I've lived in this town for 25 years, I'm a resident of Haverford.
What's your address, I'm sorry?
32 Westwood Park Drive. And I just want you to know, during public meeting, we don't have to give an address anymore. It's been established in the state of Pennsylvania under sunshine law, I just need to say that I'm from Haverford.
Okay.
But I'll give it to you.
Thank you.
I'm not here to fight with you.
It would be helpful to me to know just, at least generally, the neighborhood.
Minowa, I'm, I'm near the Lanark Country Club. I'm in Ward 2. So I'm concerned about this plan, and like the lovely woman that had just spoken about, you know, the businesses here, and I really do think that the plan is not friendly to mom-and-pop stores, and I've made a comment about that before at a commissioner's meeting. With all the discussion about businesses booming, and then building, and then, you know, offering pricing, you know, to buy land or the building, have we really looked at the plan for the traffic in this town? And I've asked that first. I know that we, I feel like this town puts the car before the horse, and we create problems from what we've already done. We have a traffic problem in this town. We are backed up, and you would go on Haverford Road anytime after 3, till about 6 o'clock, and you're sitting, you're sitting, you're sitting, you're sitting. I knew that when I purchased my home 25 years ago, I knew this area, I worked in Laurier, got it, wanted it, wanted to be here. Traffic is a huge concern for me, because we're going to change businesses and add businesses and move things around, that's not going to bode well for the people and the housing behind the Haverford Road. And the same thing with Eagle Road. I see cars cutting through all the time, I drive this community all the time, I have three kids, I'm one of those moms, my kids are involved. And when you drive around the town and you notice things, you're, you get concerned. And I'm concerned, because there are houses, there's communities, and then people are moving, because they don't like the traffic. Delaware County, we know there's an increase in traffic. From what I understand, 24,000 cars pass up and down Haverford Road and Eagle Road, that corridor, up until, I think it's Lawrence Road there. We are a cut-through to the Blue Route. And I understand that we needed the Blue Route, needed to be purchased, needed to build it, and they definitely put it in an area where people probably wouldn't complain they wanted it. So when we talk about making new businesses and bringing things in, I really ask that we look at the traffic, we look at the amount of volume that's going to increase. We haven't addressed that, and we can't really address Haverford Road, because it's a state road. So whatever we do is really going to impact the state. And I do hope the state pushes back, somebody has some common sense somewhere, I'm hoping for it. And then, the other thing is, like, with all the traffic, too, when you start building, then we start having houses have problems in their basements, we have flooding. And that's something that we have here, it's a real concern. We had, what?
Did you say lice?
Flooding.
Flooding.
Flooding. Lice, we have that in our schools as well. But we do have an issue. And, you know, I'm concerned, because once you start to have water problems in your basement, your structural foundation starts to go, so there's all these other things. So what I'm asking is, I really think this plan really needs to be evaluated. I'm not for the plan at all, I'm not happy with it, I feel like this was something that was kind of brought in again from 2009, I was here, I was being a mom to my older kids, and I didn't come up and complain too much, because I was liking the way things went. Now, I'm going to start complaining, because I'm concerned. I saw Naylor's Run be flooded out, I saw that, I was here for that. And I'm just asking that we really look at things, and before we make any moves, we look at the problems that we have and fix them first, before we make change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Mike McDevitt, I'm on Wendy Road, Ward 4. Just a quick question, hearing, I'm new to all of this, I have concerns, but before I even like voice my opinion or anything, my, I just have one question. Where can I find information on this proposal, this plan, whatever it is, I'm hearing different things, it's, it's not a plan, it's a proposal, there's, I'm just new to the whole process of what's going on here, where can I find the information, where is it updated? And, okay.
Township website.
If you go to the township website, if I may, I printed out everything they have, it's on the first page of the township website, and if you drill down, there are various pieces of information, as you can see, that will give you some background, and then ultimately, it leads you to the draft itself.
Okay.
And you can, you can do a word search within the plain document, if you want to look up a particular road or a particular area, you can usually find it that way.
Okay, as far as moving forward with updates to all this, where is that present for us as residents? I hear YouTube, I hear all this, I'm just saying, a complete repository area, where, like, people are, like, I don't, as far as the planning process goes, and things moving forward, or, you know, the minutes, what, everything coming together, that's what I want to know, that's, you know, so.
The, as we said, all the documentation, the draft plan, everything like that, is on the township website, and you can download that and read it at your leisure.
Okay.
The planning commission is tasked with responsibility of reviewing the comprehensive plan, and making a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. And we've been having meetings since June, I think this is like our seventh or eighth meeting regarding the comprehensive plan. At some point in time in the near future, the planning commission is going to say to the Board of Commissioners, "We recommend this plan, but we think you should make the following changes." Then we'll list the changes that we think have to be made. The Board of Commissioners will take our recommendations on their advisement, they're going to send the comprehensive plan out to adjacent municipalities, the Delaware County Planning Commission, the school district, for their comment, okay? At the end of that review, or sometime during that review, the commissioners will hold a public hearing, which is a formal hearing, to review the draft plan, and everybody who's made comments to the planning commission is welcome to come back and make the same comments to the Board of Commissioners. The Court, Board of Commissioners will take those comments and advisement, and direct the consultant to revise the plan based upon where they feel it has to be, in order to finalize the document. And then, eventually, they'll vote on the document and adopt it. So there's a lot of planning that still has to happen, there's several meetings that'll still have to happen, okay? Once the plan is adopted, okay, as I said earlier, this is just a blueprint, there's nothing in here that says you have to do this, okay? It's not like a zoning ordinance or anything like that, it's not a law, it's just a recommendation. The township would, would then start to modify their laws to incorporate those recommendations into the comprehensive plan, the township commissioners feel are important enough to go forward. And once those changes are made to the zoning ordinance, to incorporate changes, then it's business as usual, okay?
Okay.
So that's, that's the process, and it's going to take several months for that process to be finalized.
Angelo, if I could add one point, when you say about changing the laws, those development regulations apply to new things, they don't do anything to harm any existing business.
Right.
So there are at least going to be some public hearings required under state law. We are, the township commissioners are required to have more public hearings, as Angelo was saying, before they approve this plan or blueprint, and then, assuming it's eventually adopted, after they get more public input and make their decisions. It's ultimately the commissioners of the township, your commissioner and the other commissioners, who are the legislature, and they make the decision to adopt this as their guideline for the future. And then, if somebody says, "Well, one of the guidelines was, whatever, on Mr. McDevitt's street, we should have a no-parking stretch." It doesn't say that, but if, if that was the idea, something would have to happen in the future, legislation, a new zoning law, some, something would have to be done, again, by the commissioners, it would probably go back to the planning commission for their review and recommendations, we don't pass the laws, we can only recommend, and then the commissioners decide. And there would be more hearings about it, and opportunities for you and anybody in the community to be heard.
Okay, yeah, because-
The trick is to pay attention to the website.
I, I think that's like a major concern of mine, the, the transparency, and the amount of information that's out there that people don't even know about, because I found out about this three months ago, somebody asked me to sign a petition, and I was getting various pieces of information, so now there's public, you're saying there's going to be public hearings, what have you. My concern is getting that out to the, to the nation here in Haverford. And that's one of my concerns is, is the stuff buried, is where do you find it, how does other people know about it? Like I said, I'm new to this, but I am concerned, I am concerned from what I've heard here already, and from a few business owners that I know, that this could affect. So that is my concern, is the transparency, and to get more people involved, because a lot of things anymore, I just think are like, kind of either buried, or, like, everybody's busy, and we all got our lives to go, but this, this is a big, this could affect a lot of people. And one thing is, somebody's bringing up property values, there's a lot going on here, and, you know, that's, you know-
I agree with you, it's important.
Yes.
But keep in mind, it's a guideline, it is not law.
I understand.
It's not like, you can only go 35 miles an hour around Haverford.
I understand that, but things become law eventually-
Yes, you're right.
Because there's a process followed.
No, you're right.
It's a matter of getting it out, too.
You said it's important. I suggest you, you, one suggestion, in addition to checking the website of the township, even better, if your commission, if you, if your commissioner has a mailing list, who's the fourth ward commissioner?
Uh, Trump, yeah.
Judy Trumbett has her mailing list.
Judy Trumbett's-
Ms. Trumbett.
Mailing list is, her emails are excellent, in summing up what's been happening at the commissioner level, and events in the township. So you're fortunate, you have a commissioner who gets the word out. So tonight or tomorrow, I would recommend you sign up to be on her mailing list. That would be a big, make a big difference. And the township has a township-wide mailing list, you can add email list, you can join.
Yeah, you have to, you know, make sure you get on somebody's mailing list, because the information's there, and- And if you sign up for the list, you'll get the information.
Okay. Got any recommendation? But yeah, thanks for your time. Thanks for listening to me. It is a concern.
Thanks for coming in. Out of curiosity, where, where's Wendy, Wendy Road, you said?
It's in the fourth Ward.
And.
That is off of, we're on the other side of, we're in Paddock Farms.
Oh, okay.
Okay. YMCA, we're on the other side.
Done, okay, gotcha. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Angelo, this might be a good moment to offer some resources for people. You can come and look at these after the meeting's over. But at the state level, Citizens Guide to Pennsylvania Local Government, Municipal Planning Commissions, Comprehensive Plans, all these things are basic plain English citizen materials that would help everyone understand this.
They are free publications from the Pennsylvania Department of Community Economic Development that are free online.
Right. All of this I got from online.
Yes.
And for those who are interested in perhaps taking on a larger role, here's an article on the most important skills for Planning Commissioners to have. And overreacting is certainly not one of them.
Anyone else care to make a statement or ask a question? Ma'am? No?
I just want to say one more thing. I got the, sorry, Dottie, again.
Yep.
I was just looking in the appendix. It looks like page A1 is missing when I was going through it, so.
Charlie.
Uh, make sure it's in.
That's all right.
Okay. So at our last meeting, we, we implied that we would be making, probably having discussion regarding a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. I think that's premature at this point. I, I think there's still revisions that have to be made to the draft plan based upon comments that were made last time. So we're not going to make a formal recommendation to the Board of Commissioners at tonight's meeting. But I have a homework assignment for everybody. I know you all have comments regarding the plan, the way it's written. And in listening to the last meeting, I think some of those comments are kind of hard to make clear just by discussing them. Okay? Some of them may be more subjective than objective. So what I'd like each of us to do is to write a short paragraph regarding your specific comments. Okay? And in writing that paragraph, I'd like you to indicate where you think it would be best inserted into the document. Okay? And if we all do that, then we'll have all our comments collected as a group.
So Angelo, if you have three comments, you'd have three paragraphs.
I'd have three paragraphs, that's right.
And, and you may still have some outstanding issues where you say, this paragraph is unclear, please reword. I mean, those are valid comments too.
And then we have one of two choices. We can gather those comments. And obviously, we can read them aloud in the public so that everybody knows what we're thinking. But then we can submit them to a, a subcommittee of the Planning Commission who can then go through them and kind of organize them so they're somewhat consistent. Each of us probably has a little different writing style. So hopefully, the subcommittee will be able to edit the comments without changing any of the substance, but, so that they read better. Or as an alternate to that, we can give our written comments directly to Charlie, since he's the author of the document. And he can rephrase them to fit the language that's already established in the document.
I, I think if the subcommittee meets, I'd suggest they should agree on the substance of the comment and agree that it belongs in the plan. And I, I can worry about finessing the wording.
Okay. All right. So our, our, our subcommittee is David, Lou, and Maggie. They've agreed to take this undertaking. But all of us have to provide that information to them as soon as possible. And I, I'd like to set a deadline for that. And what do you two guys, what do you think? How much time do you think you're gonna need to go through this? I mean, realistically, I'm looking at the Planning Commission's schedule for the rest of the year. And we have one meeting in November and one meeting in December. So there's time between meetings where you would have some time. But the, the difficulty is we have Thanksgiving holidays and, and things like that. So if we were to get, everyone would get their comments to you by, our next meeting is the 13th? November 13th?
The 10th.
10th, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah.
So 10th, 11th, 12th. Everyone got their comments to you by next Friday?
That's probably pushing them.
Next Friday is what date again?
It's about the 4th.
4th? Okay.
My only. I, I'm thinking that, that most of us already have an idea of what we want to say. We've probably already said it in one fashion or another.
The only thing, the only thing that's in front of me is that I'm a judge of elections. But once that's over on November 8th, I'm free and cleared to vote by time.
Okay. But having it before that isn't gonna hurt you?
Yeah, no, it won't hurt me, that's fine.
Is, is November 4th reasonable with you guys?
And meanwhile, I will be working on giving you draft revisions to the various comments we heard at the last two meetings.
I don't want to end up with like four revisions of the draft either.
Okay, well.
So you, you, you continue working on the comments that you've already gotten.
Right. That's exactly what I mean.
And these guys will get the comments on the 4th.
And Charlie, if, if you're making further revisions of this, is that something that you could just pull some? If you're saying, this is something that I think needs to change because I heard something else about it and I want to change it? Like, can you pull that out and send it to us directly? Like, I, I don't want to make a bunch of comments on this and then find out that you made some revisions and then have my comments need to be revised. You know what I mean? Charlie, when would you have version three? We have version two now.
Correct.
When would you have version three ready?
Next, let me just say, uh, I, I will get them out to you by the 4th.
So you'll have version three at the same time you'll have.
Maybe I can move that up a little bit. You want to see that before you submit your comments, which is understandable. Let's see. Next, I don't like to schedule in front of me. Next Tuesday is what?
First?
First.
I'm sorry, Angelo, did you say that we're, the homework assignment, we're submitting some comments for the subcommittee to review? And then those, the subcommittee is going to send something to Charlie for a final revision?
Yeah.
Maybe Charlie just pause and wait for the Planning Commission's feedback?
Feedback on the.
I can do that too.
The stuff that work, that your subcommittee is putting together. I think it'd be best for Charlie to give us something, whatever is his final revision.
Yeah, I don't, there's not a lot of revisions for the past two meetings.
On the, what we have. Like you said, we don't want to make a lot of comments that then wind up being surplus. So if we can see version three and then have some time for the people, for the comments, which people have stuck drafting now, and if they have to change them, that's fine. And then we would need, I would say, we'd need a few weeks.
Oh, then here's what we can do.
Maggie's pretty busy. I.
Here's what we can do. Wait, if, if we all submit our written comments to the subcommittee by the 4th, then at our meeting on the 10th, is that the right date?
I thought you said 13th.
No.
Next, next meeting is the 10th?
10th, okay. At the meeting on the November 10th, the Planning Commission will, will review their comment. Okay? Our individual comments. Okay? And then, and then based on that, we'll submit those to Charlie. And Charlie will redo the draft again and have it to us in time for our December meeting, sometime in advance of our December meeting so that we can act on it in December.
Yeah, give me a hard deadline, hard and fast deadline.
What's, what's our meeting in December? What's the second?
First Thursday or second Thursday?
Second Thursday.
So you would like me to, do you need me to attend the November and December meeting or just December?
No, I don't think you have to come in November.
Okay, CS, okay, not in November. I will attend December.
December 8th. Okay. So yeah, so Thanksgiving is in there, isn't it?
We'll see.
All right. So November 10th, we give you our comments. And how long is it gonna take you to turn that around?
I will make sure I set aside time to make sure you have at least two weeks before the 8th. So do you?
So that's, that's the Friday after Thanksgiving. Right?
No, I got a little confused.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not going away for Thanksgiving, so.
All right, all right.
So people should get written comments into us by.
I don't want to see gravy stains on this revised.
Comments from the Planning Commission members.
Right.
By November.
November 4th.
November 4th.
And then the Planning Commission at their meeting on November 10th.
Will, will, look at them and make whatever comments we want.
Right. And then, and then we'll submit those to Charlie at the end of that meeting. Charlie's not coming on the 10th. And then by Black Friday, which is the 25th, Charlie will have the final version of the draft plan to us.
Yes.
And then on December 8th, which is two weeks later, we'll hopefully be able to make a motion to forward the plan to the Board of Commissioners.
The only other suggestion I have is, send me whatever you've assembled because I may have some feedback that may help you in reviewing those comments.
Do we still have a role for our subcommittee or are we disbanded? We're hoping we were disbanded. But what is the, where does the subcommittee come in in that schedule?
Good question. All right. All right. So let's say, we're at the 10th. Yeah, if Charlie's gonna handle the editing, if you will, then there's no need for the subcommittee to meet. So let's say everybody submits their comments to me by November 4th. Okay? And then I'll put them together, organize them together, and then we'll discuss them. All right.
I'm not sure that works.
No? All right, what do you think?
Well, I think there's different kinds of edits. And there's edits and there's edits.
Yeah, if, if something is, you know, a wording or clarification, you might just want to copy everyone and just send it out. And we can be working on those. You know, the policy matters need to go through the Planning Commission. The edits, you know, we'd like to get those whenever they're on your mind.
I, I'm, I'm looking, for what we're gonna do for the 4th, I'm looking at recommendations, basically recommendations for approval. Okay? In other words, we need to modify the report that says that we need to solidify or make more effective our open space regulations. Okay? So that's a recommendation that I would write, write up wording that says, I think this wording should go in, on page 18.
Okay, that's two different things. One is a general concept of this is something that should be in there, which would be a little paragraph that says, I think we need something better on open space with some explanation of that. Rewriting then, providing a paragraph or two is a different issue.
No, it's the same thing. I mean, I, it's the, my, it's my opinion. And then I have to put in writing what my opinion is.
But I thought we don't want to do that until we have Charlie's version three. We can start on it, but I don't think they should be submitted till we know what we're writing about.
I, I, I think right now we're asking for the substance of what you'd like to see changed. And if you want to give me some other edits, you're welcome to send those at any time that are not policy.
Charlie, some of the comments that were made last time, I don't know how you could incorporate changes. That, because they're, they're too subjective. I mean. You're, 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 you get an idea, someone has an idea of what the thing should look like. But how do they convey that idea to you without writing it down?
And I, I, that's great for the policy matters, yes.
So I think that the larger, I just call them large rather than subjective. And some of them are subjective, but they're large. I'll give you my, I'll give you one for me. Well, no, your example's fine. The open space issues, the fee issues. If it's, if there's something in the plan that talks about that, and it's a matter of editing some words or taking out a sentence or putting in a sentence, that seems pretty straightforward, that should go directly to Charlie. If it's something more substantive or larger, then people need to see what the final version is of version three and then draft something. You need, I, I've done some of that with Charlie. And some of it got in, some of it didn't. So I'm gonna take another shot at trying to rewrite something.
But, but when we meet on the 10th, we're gonna be discussing each of these issues. Right? And some of them may, may be okay. Everybody may be in agreement with the specific issue. Or there may be a majority that isn't in favor of, of a, of a recommendation. So we need to, to vet our collective comments to represent a unified response, if you will.
All right. So maybe on the 10th, the, the goal ought to be to decide what of those comments are narrow and modifiable in a manageable way by Charlie and which are broader and require somebody else or Charlie or someone to sit down and come up with a paragraph or a page or three pages that deal with what we're talking about.
As a general rule.
Let's talk, excuse me, Charlie. So I think it's helpful. What you're suggesting is good because then we'll have something in front of us with each person's ideas. And we can say, that's a good one. Not that's a good one or a bad one, but at least we'll know the scope of what we're talking about as opposed to just noodling it in, in public. So on the 10th, we try to, we have something concrete in front of us and we can make decisions about what should be, how we're gonna proceed from there. I'll leave it at that.
As a general rule, I always ask people to separate their comments. Policy matters that the Planning Commission needs to discuss. Editorial matters that are not controversial that we can just fix.
Okay, does that make sense? We decide on the 10th what the next step is. In other words, whether we need a committee or we don't need a committee or we need to rewrite things or Charlie can do it or someone else can do it. There's another issue, which is people, some people have written, I don't know if people want to do this. I know Jack, I think, did. And Maggie and maybe Lou had interdelineations. They had a lot of comments on the draft. Is that right?
On this draft or the previous draft?
No, not submitted, but I thought, some people said they had lots of comments on the draft, specific ones. And I think that's more in the wording category and those could be just sent to Charlie.
That would save us time. That would allow us to move forward on getting it to you quickly if we can get the editorial comments whenever people have them.
Edits. Specific little edits.
Yeah, clarify this.
Yeah, yeah.
Elaborate upon this, things that are not policy matters.
That's clear as mud, I think. We're all set.
All right. So we still have a deadline on November 4th individually, correct? Or no?
The 10th.
The 10th, all right. So we're gonna show up on the 10th and we're not gonna have had the opportunity to look at everybody else's comments.
People should try to get them in before. They're short. They can bring them on the 10th.
All right. So whenever your comments are done, email them to everybody on the Planning Commission. Hey, Jack? You guys okay with that? Whenever you have them done, email them to everybody. I don't want it.
And then on the 10th?
Then on 10th, we'll review those, right? And then based upon a consensus on the meeting on the 10th, then we'll, we'll submit those to Charlie and he'll make further revisions. That'll get back to us by the 25th. And hopefully, that'll give us two weeks to have reviewed that final draft, if you will. And we'll be able to act on it on December 8th.
That seems to work. I would just add on the 10th, we can divvy things up in case there's some issues that are best to go to Lou and Maggie and me.
All right. Okay, everybody okay with that? Yes, everybody nodding yes, okay. All right. Moving on, we have two...
A question for Charlie. Charlie, on the, oh, I forgot what. Oh, you mentioned the number of years before the 100, the high speed gets to King of Prussia.
Yes.
Could you explain that?
Well, it's an extremely expensive project, and the money's not there for the construction. They're doing some land acquisition, but it's, it's unknown when it would actually be built. And there may not ever be the money for the construction.
So a 10-year comprehensive plan probably doesn't take into account that. We're going to have people going to King of Prussia?
We need to think about it, I'm not sure, I mean, it could increase some ridership on the line, but I don't think it's going to make dramatic changes. Now, the closest example is Tyson Corner, Tyson's, Virginia, where they extended the metro rail to a similar area, and they got a tremendous amount of new development occurring along that rail line. They got a lot of new apartment complexes, the car dealerships all changed over to apartment complexes. And that is having ridership changes, but that's a fixed rail line that's pretty high speed that connects into the whole metropolitan area. I don't expect that level of change to happen in King of Prussia.
Pennsylvania Railroad created a pretty big change, but...
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I haven't seen the impact studies on it, I haven't seen the forecasts, but just my feeling tells me it's not going to have a great deal of change in lane use patterns or ridership patterns.
And sticking on transportation for a minute, the, what is it called now? The Paoli-Thorndale Line of the, SEPTA, it's still SEPTA, the former R5. The, a lot of people walk from Haverford Town, I know that's in Lower Merion, I think it's all in Lower Merion.
Right, right.
But a lot of people walk from Haverford Township to those lines or drive. And that's part of the picture of the township.
Yes.
And I thought that ought to get some, at least a paragraph or a little more mention.
We could certainly mention that.
Yeah, one of the benefits of living in Haverford Township is the proximity to transportation facilities, especially those that bring you into the city. I mean, there's a lot of people who worked in this city that used to take public transportation before COVID, and I suspect that'll get back to where it was at some point in time. But that's, that's one of the drawing cards of Haverford Township, it's proximity to Philadelphia and the transportation available into Philadelphia.
Some people are questioning that these days, but it's still a benefit.
Okay.
What else?
Well, and then, Charlie, you sent out a map, SEPTA's contemplating changes to some of their bus routes.
Yeah, they're proposing to remove a bus service on several roads in the township.
103 that comes up Arlington and down Brookline Boulevard is going to disappear? The way I read the map.
Yeah, you can, when you go on their Bus Revolution website, they have a slider map, and you can see the current bus routes and the proposed bus routes. And a number of them, a number of roads were no longer of bus service, but they're proposing some type of demand responsive system, which I don't know the details of, but you would call in advance, 24 hours in advance, and there might be a van that would pick you up.
Oh, okay, okay. All right.
Charlie, in some ways, a plan is an introduction to the township, to people who've never lived here, never been here, have no idea how the government works, maybe they're thinking of buying a house. If you could maybe point us to any model of, that you've used that do that, that might be helpful.
Okay, we can add some text.
A little PR, if you will.
Yeah, what's Haverford Township? Because I think the plan assumes people who are already are here and not...
Yeah, it's written towards people who are already residents.
And know where Paddock is.
Anybody else? You want a last chance, anybody else in the audience want to speak? No, okay. We'll move on to minutes.
Before we do that, I just want to get a clarification. From the podium tonight, we've heard comments that suggest that there are things going on that are not transparent and public in this document and in these meetings. My understanding is that, Angelo, you have committed to contacting the official in charge of the group that was claimed to have been involved with some $18 million, and you're going to get an official response and provide it in this public forum at the next meeting?
I'll get a clarification on the statements that were made at the annual meeting of HPED, yes?
Thank you.
Formerly HPED. I think that's sort of their legal name, by the way, they told me. HPED's still their legal name.
Oh.
But they're marketing this.
They market, yeah, Discover Haverford, okay. All right, so we have a minutes from September 8th, 2022. I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes as written.
Second?
Any comments, questions, revisions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay. All right, so the minutes for September 8th are approved? And I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from our September 22nd, 2022 meeting as presented.
So at the September 2022 meeting, I voted nay for the, the...
Lot-line revision?
Lot-line revision, Armore Avenue? And I would like the minutes to reflect why? Because the application didn't address the township engineer's three comments about sidewalks, curbs, and after making, redoing the lot-line, the maximum and pervious coverages were then exceeded on one of the new parcels.
It was, well, it currently is exceeded now, and the change would make it less non-conforming. Wasn't making it worse.
But still non-conforming.
Oh, yeah, well, you have a right to your non-conformity.
Well, and not if they are changing the lot-lines, they don't get to redraw the lot-lines and then still have a non-conforming property. And I think that, I think when we discussed it, it was, they needed to tear out some portion of the driveway.
Okay.
But I just wanted to make sure that the reason why I voted against it was captured in the minutes.
Okay. So Marjorie, can you make that adjustment and send it to Jack, make sure he's comfortable with the language? And then based upon those changes, any other comments? Okay, all in favor of approving the minutes based upon Jack's revision, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No. All right. No, I did vote no. Nobody voted.
I have another, I have one last comment.
One last comment, okay.
So to the people who are here, Mr. Swan, to the folks who are here, I just want to say, this body, at least speaking for myself, and I think I'm speaking for everyone here, have received the draft and started studying it in the spring, and have, from that time forward and as far as I can see into the future, are open to your comments, really, actually, really, even though we may not agree all the time, we are open to the comments, we encourage you to read the plan and write things to us, and we want to hear them. And I think it's great that people have come in, even when I don't agree or I think it's misguided or misinformed, it's great that people are paying attention, that they're coming in, and I think we can all agree, paying even more attention is even better. And as we said, keep in touch with your commissioner, be on the commissioner mailing list, be on the township mailing list, there's other mailing lists. And speaking for myself, I have to agree, and for others, I have to agree that the township has not always been as transparent or not, they're transparent, they just, it's not that easy, and I don't think it's a conspiracy. What I've learned, working with the township, is people are trying, they're trying to make it better. We build on what existed in the past, and what existed in the past has been, is evolving, is changing. I think it's getting better. We have new personnel, we have new commissioners, we have new people on the planning commission, except for Angelo. And I think it's getting better, and I don't want to say transparent, it's just getting clearer. And I struggle with the website. I mean, it's not easy. And there was an incident, there was a meeting held by the two of the commissioners, Larry Holmes and Laura Cavender, recently. Not, no, not that meeting, there was a meeting of the commissioners, the last meeting of the commissioners. And at that meeting, I watched it on TV, and someone spoke from the podium and said, they were happy with what the information that had gotten out, they had found things, but they found, I don't remember who's the comprehensive plan, it might have been, or something else was difficult to find. Commissioner Holmes said, well, no, and he looked at his computer, and he said, you know, you're right, it's hard to find, we'll change that tomorrow. So I think, I don't think it's a conspiracy to prevent people from finding things, but it's, it just takes time. So keep at it, is what I'm saying.
To add on that, I think in this day and age, everybody relies on electronic. And there's something that you say too about sending something to everybody via mail. Is there older people here that want to be informed, don't know what's going on? They're not necessarily plugged into the internet or on social media. Like, you know, if you want to do a better job, you have to take all the above approach. Website, going out talking to people, commissioners, letters. I know my commissioner mail, even still mails stuff to my house, which I greatly appreciate. So I think maybe we should take a little bit of that money and do some snail mail.
Well...
By the way, everybody truly will be, truly be informed, and they're not condescending that, well, listen, we're trying to get the information out there and nobody's trying to keep it. I don't think you're trying to keep stuff from us, but I, sometimes too, I don't think, I think things get lost in terms of, I think it has to be involved. And I think that keeps everybody honest.
Having not been raised on the internet, I sympathize and agree.
Well, I'm that generation, I'm the middle generation, so I didn't have it...
Oh, me too.
...to the gap with my parents. So I think it, and that way, everybody's informed. That's just my two cents. I see you guys a lot of heading to it. Well, yes, we did send a mail out here and every resident out.
It wasn't the January 21st meeting, it was...
Just read the newsletter. Motion to adjourn?
Something of this importance should just be something like, hey, this is what we're playing, we're required for so many years to have this, this is what's going on, we would like you to know, and we would like your input.
Thank you, ma'am. Move, move to adjourn? Have a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We're adjourned, thank you.